Y'all ready?
We're ready.
Let's go. Alright, we'll call our Cleveland County Mercy New Case District meeting to order. Welcome everyone. Roll call, Laura Cobb.
Here.
Emmett Owens.
Here.
And Roger Keegan.
Here.
We have no one who asked to speak for this particular meeting. Anybody here need to speak as far as officials?
I'll make the buzzer appropriate, man.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion cheers. Report from staff, Mercy manager.
Okay, so I handed out the family area commissioner report. We issued 12 addresses, our call volume was extremely high in February, we were super, super busy. So on top of the extras we did, just a little bit of an update, we did get the bed linens ordered and received for the downstairs areas. We finally got the key fob system installed and working, everybody has new key fobs. We had to fix our radar in the Mercy operations center, we had a desk repair we had to get done in the lab center. So we got all those things, we took an active shooter course and at the moment, I was just gonna let you guys know, I had a service call in to check the air conditioner at the combo building. We continually have problems with it, so we have to call them about two to three times a year. So I'm actually gonna get a quote on replacing that little unit, just wanna be small wall units.
Yeah.
So they're not very, very expensive, but we've had so much trouble with it, I think it'll just be best to go in and replace it, but I'm gonna try to hold off till next budget of course, but I'll just kinda FYI, I haven't been looked at in the I think that's all we've got going on.
Any questions for Mr. Christian?
Did you order some of those large baggies to put each set of landings in, so you just hand them around?
We are going to probably, they come in their own, we're gonna keep them in their own case.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And we're gonna, I've got Louis looking at webs, if not, we'll just order it off of Amazon. We're gonna get some of the large totes, just to put them in the large totes. Or even the ones that you can store underneath the box down there, so I'm gonna try to get a good system to store those and keep those going.
Alright.
Oh, I have one more thing.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have really good news, finally the generator is in for Turkey, it's not in, it's on the way for Turkey Heaven. I checked with him again today and he said it is on the way, it is shipped, so we'll be installing that at some point in the future.
The company gonna install, we gotta pay somebody?
We'll have to pay somebody, so usually I'll need to, I'm kinda leery of calling Terry Henderson yet and arranging with him until he gets here, but he'll be the one to install.
Any other questions? Ms. Charlie?
Report, sir.
Okay, no more business, any discussion items?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Anything on the way?
I did get notification, we had some additional information requested, so I sent that in, but as far as approval or denial, nothing else.
Alright, we have a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
I think this Cobb got you there, I feel.
Good.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Cheers. Alright, I'm showing five, y'all ready?
We're ready.
Good afternoon, everybody, we're gonna call our commission meeting, but we're gonna thank y'all all for coming and roll call, Laura Cobb.
Here.
Emmett Owens.
Here.
Terry Hendricks.
Here.
Roger Keegan.
Here.
This time we'll pledge allegiance to the flag, Ms. Cobb. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for having us here tonight, Father, I just pray that you'll just lead and guide us to make godly decisions, Father. I pray that you just uplift our county, our nation, Father, just uphold us as we lead tonight and take us home safe. Father, be with those that have lost loved ones, just uplift them through this time in Jesus' mission, amen.
So we have Mike Mitchell, here with Waste Management. Let you, you ready to come and speak, or do you wanna wait till your portion?
Wait.
Does it mean a whole? Are you ready, are you prepared?
I'm ready.
Yes, sir. If we didn't have you on the agenda, I wouldn't.
Well, Commissioner, thank you so much for letting me come talk to you tonight. I know we've had some mishaps, we've had some staffing issues and system issues. It all started when we did the re-rout, okay? And we had a system that's automated and it routes this, routes this to the routes and puts it into our system for the drivers to see it. And at the same time, it will notify our printer, print postcards sent out. Well, it told our system one thing and told the printer another thing and it really messed things up. So we had the driver servicing Monday, but it was actually supposed to be serviced on Wednesday. So we've got that corrected now. We've got maps to the release department where they can actually look and see where the route is, if somebody calls into the and they can tell them, we've known, there are things right in our system now, so when they call in to us, they're explaining to you exactly where the route they is. So we should be all fixed now. The other things we ran into is staffing issues. We had one driver that left the company and that's gonna happen, we have attrition like any other company. But we have one driver that was not meeting the expectations of Waste Management or Cleveland County and we had to parlay so. That and since made things quite difficult. We have two backup drivers in place now, they're not the permanent drivers, they are backup drivers, but they will be there as needed until we give root. We do have the requisitions to post position now approved and that will be done tonight. So I'd like to ask you all, if you have any recommendations, we would love to hire a Cleveland County resident. That would be very beneficial not only to Waste Management, but Cleveland County.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a pay scale for that driver?
It starts $21 an hour.
$21 an hour start and pay, and then from there it's based on?
You get a, you usually get a possible raise every month.
Okay, so it's start and pay, but there's no, if he's been a truck driver or?
If he's been in the garbage business, if he's been in the garbage business and garbage experience, like if he worked for Republic before, they usually give him, they usually say two years service, every two years they give him one year experience, one year experience with us.
Okay, so it'd be good if you had a driver that, I had a truck driver call me the other day.
If it would be in the garbage business.
Right.
If it's somebody.
He's not, he hasn't been in the garbage business.
No, that's the only thing that will do as far as.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to make sure when I tell him about it.
Yeah, that's just $21 an hour.
Okay. And benefits?
All you gotta have is a class B, you do not have a class A, class B you have benefits over 90 days.
And then there's insurance for the individual, does he have to pay for the insurance?
Yes, insurance for the individual, insurance for family, they have, we have to pay for. And they got like four or five different pay scales. If you're a young guy that don't go to the doctor much, it's one pay, if you're old like me and starting to have to go to the doctor all the time, it's another pay. But it's based on how many, yeah, they've got like four or five different options.
Can I have your card?
I don't have a card.
If I have to go online, what's your name?
Yes.
Can you leave a description of that job out, or do you have a description?
I do, I have one, we can email, we can email. We can email, we can email.
Cause I would love to have a driver from this area.
I would love to, cause it is very difficult for us.
This one here was talking about his life tonight after, I think he was going somewhere down to Trussell, putting in an application or somewhere. He don't even go that far, so he can just.
When I got my city license, I could, I could, I mean, I could drive everything, but the one thing about the garbage business wasn't a homer. And that's one, and it, they pay a lot better more than what it did when I started off 13 years ago.
Okay.
And I'll get the information sent in some out to get them posted, but I'll reach out unless I know exactly when they're posted, so y'all be able to actually find them.
Can we put that on our county website? How about, can we?
You'd be promoting.
Okay, I guess.
That's a good idea, though, I mean, I see what you're saying.
The commissioner certainly posts things on the person.
Oh, I will.
That's why I still ask you to do that on the person page.
You can put it on the person page.
Are you ready to lose another employee name right now?
And if you, and if you have somebody that y'all revenue, if you'll reach out to me and Miranda, we can get through, and we still have to interview, we can get through.
All our recommenders come top to you, I don't recommend nobody.
I understand, but if there is somebody.
They can copy that, we can have this whole county redone in a week, but talk to you.
But if there's somebody that you don't know, you'll send it to, send it to us.
We can do that.
We can get this pulled up.
Okay. I'll get on that phone tonight, man.
Thank you so much.
I sort of wanna share with you what we're going through. So alright, Camro 66 didn't get picked up last week, I sent you a text and y'all did come out Saturday to get it. Okay, I got an email right before the meeting started that they didn't get the garbage from this lady that lives on 66 today, even though she called Waste Management and said, oh yeah, yours was picked up and gave them time, but she said it was not picked up.
Well, I will personally go back through that separately, but I, cause I looked at 66 today on the thing and I know that he went on the six, he supposed to go, he went up and down. And I don't know if it's one of them just sets a little far off, but I'll go back, you give me that, that's all.
But I mean, it's not just this.
Right.
I mean, over the last month, it's been numerous roads, 30,000 moving on.
All of that was on the driver that was not, not one of his, not one of his personally did, but we found a lot. All 90, 90% of the problem we was having was off that one route and he was driving on roads as well, people and stuff. And we terminated him, once we, once we documented that that's what he was doing, he would say that he picked everybody's up like you're saying.
Yeah.
But he was not, he was just driving out of there, not doing nothing.
One more thing, are y'all looking too good at local office, so we don't, our customers, our constituents don't have to call out of state and then those folks are telling us stuff that half the time not true.
It is being considered, yes it is, I can't say that it's finalized yet, but it's been considered.
Okay.
We don't wanna tell you that it's gonna happen or not, but it is in the works.
Because it's hard for our people to get on the phone and have to, and you know, I was explaining this before, it's 30 to 45 minute wait. And you know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna stay on the phone and it's the same thing when people setting up new accounts. That's where they don't set up their account because it's taking them so long. There's gotta be a better solution.
They had some staffing issues as well and that is something they were ramping up, stacking up as well. So that will be addressing that, but we're still considering the locals.
Shall we?
How many people at the call centers you have, since we're saying, how many states go to that same call center? When you say you're planning on putting an office in Cleveland County, I mean, that sounds good, you're thinking about it or speculating. What I'm asking is, is at this call center, how many people from, how many states call into that call center?
Four states.
Four states and how many counties?
I'm sure.
I tell you, how quick you gonna get somebody in Cleveland County.
Franklin Tennessee, our base is in Franklin, Tennessee, however, we have a majority of our customer service reps are working from different offices. Everything's, communication has changed so much, we don't all have to be in one place, so they're all over the place, so.
I mean, if y'all get this, he speaks, I'll be happy, but also we'll tell you this, 99% of the calls I'm getting says y'all need to be fired. And we work, I work for constituents, I mean, when I get enough of them calls, then that's what I'm gonna be pushing. So I mean, I want y'all to get it done and get it done right, and that's what the contract says, but it ain't that many.
Cause what happens is, he gets fired.
Yeah.
So you know, it's, it's a round the table kind of thing.
It was a not bear, three weeks before the election, a not bear. And I know Roger and I, we had a deal, we continued, so people calling and having to explain and you know, I turned a road in and I would say, I would put on there the whole road and they'd end up getting one can and leaving the rest of the.
That's the guy that.
Can.
And that's the guy that.
And I'm like, how could you not see all the other cans? We all got eight text messages from me all weekend, so y'all can see, my, we're leaving, you can see what I dealt with this weekend. It was nothing but Laura's calls, that's all I got.
We had three drivers down here working Saturday because of the calls of the two drivers and the one that just up with, figured out the route to home and said, come in and said he done the whole route and then Miranda just had to look and he did, I mean, it's.
Most of the calls, when I get it on the weekends, take those cans running over and having them empty, do we have any recourse, I mean, what are we to do on the weekends with the cans running over and that sort of thing?
On the weekends, it's gonna be hard for us to respond, day, within the rule of time, this just goes from right there. Unless we pre-plan to be working on it. However, just communicate it to me, Mark or Miranda and we'll get taken care of for you.
Yes, sir.
On the driver, if the driver starts in the morning, does he stay on that route and all cans are picked up, or is there a timeframe, he's got eight hours?
Kind of work over 14 in a day.
Okay, so when you send the man out to Cleveland County to run his route, he stays out there, hopefully it don't take 14 hours, but what I'm saying is, he stays no longer than 14 hours, but to get, and is that, there's two trucks running in the county?
Two trucks.
Okay, so he can one have side, one have north or whatever.
They usually run side by side, that way if one of them breaks down, they jump over there. The way it moves around, they usually run it side by side, that way if one breaks down, the other one can jump right over and hit you. It's usually the way it works.
So you're staying there, both trucks are on the same strip?
Not on the same road, but like. Two of them might be.
So you have them in district, south end for today's two trucks and then they move to the north end, so you have two trucks running, okay. Okay, I bet this question is probably gonna be asked by Ms. Todd.
And most of the routes are, most of the routes, the time they take the 30 minute lunch break, they're scheduled to work 11 hours. So they should be able to come in, get the route up, take their 30 minute lunch break and be back to the yard in 11 hours. That's barring no break down stuff.
11 hours and that truck goes back to Piedmont?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Cobb?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Emmett, I.
So they would have to start their day picking up the truck in Piedmont and then bring the truck back, so you want the truck back on the yard every day?
Yes, sir, that way, that way if there's something wrong, and it has to come back, they check it out maintenance, all that, fill up fuel and things like that.
So was it right in Piedmont?
If you come out of Piedmont, went back towards, you had some on 278, there's a caution light right as you come out. If they caution light, you turn right, we're up there about three miles, about three miles.
Okay, okay.
That's what, right beside 34 Landfield, it's three corners, cause it's right where Cherokee, Calhoun, and that walk down to go together. So that's a general area.
Ms. Cobb?
I've got a question, on the layout, that you re-routed, because in my district, I'm just going by my district, cause that's what I've been looking at. Purple's winced a lot, I'm just pulling it back up. But anyway, and you got two drivers, but you got such a large area, were they able to finish that?
Should be able to finish.
I mean, you know a lot of dirt roads that you're going down.
And they're still having to come back, and it might, you know, as this goes on, it might be a tweak, a stop or two years off to do that. But right now they are coming back and having to dump and then go back and get the rest of the rest of it.
Cause that's why, I'm gonna leave that in my house, I'm like, you got too many dirt roads to be able to accomplish that in one day. But that's what you've got the people and that's what we told them and it's just, it's kinda hard for me to say the terms of the deal.
I believe that the guys, the guys that I'm now doing, I know, I will, I will go to see you more Friday on that, because these guys are go-getters and they'll get out there and do it.
Shall we?
So new drivers, so you tell them you got at least 14 hours to complete, because you gotta go back to the north end of the county list. Are they going back, they don't finish that day, they going back to pick up what they left off, or they just heading on down to the south end?
No, no, they better go back to work.
That's really what I'm saying, so you give that driver a construction fee, cause you don't want him to go back.
Yeah.
So you would get into the destruction, especially if you hired new drivers, up to 14 hours.
Yes.
I say 13, they got to be getting shot.
They can't go over 14, bill of duty laws if you get over 14.
13 hours, I'm just trying to say, when you say 14 hours, I run a construction and I say, this is time you need to be back at the barn and so. Where you're at right now, with these drivers coming in, unless you hire somebody local that knows the roads, you gonna have to, they gonna have to probably be going over 14 hours, what Mr. Todd was saying.
Yeah, and they might, and they might, but it's one of them things where it's, we'll have somebody, if they say that, that we'll have somebody, once we get to hire the guys running out, we'll have to make sure we get them all up.
Ms. Cobb?
Okay, I got another question. For these cans that are being, you know, when the driver, he doesn't fully dump it, he throws it back down and then we've got garbage piled. You know, we usually go send our workplace guys out and do, how do y'all compensate for that? Because you know, they get upset when they have to go and pick up garbage because they've got dogs in the neighborhood that stow in the garbage that you dumped out. How are we compensating the customer for that?
In a real, in a, in a, in a real world, it's, cause I run a residential truck, if the can's not overloaded, they shouldn't have to follow. And when you get the cans that are overloaded and they got garbage piled on top of, that arm, 90% of the time when you drop it, when you dump it, there's gonna be a bag following. It's, cause I, when I used to run a front load from the residential truck, I've had people take the, take an accident, take extra garbage, there'd be a can full of garbage on top if you get it in that way, but if anything's overflowing like that, it should go in trouble that following.
I see.
I understand that, but a lot of the problems is, you know, trying to get into a hurry or just not secure. I'd like to tell you that.
Right now they are overflowing, the houses have been missed for three weeks.
And I was talking to the driver before we came down here, he was saying about how much garbage is, I said, and I told him, I said, now, the thing is, once we get everybody on schedule, since them two guys are in the long with us and we're picking on dry, the tonnes on our parts are gonna go down and the same problem with garbage cans will go down when the garbage can will be full, cause they'll be dumped on the garbage.
And sometimes not, putting them in the correct bag, they just dump their can in the can.
Yes.
That's the biggest, the biggest thing on my street, don't use trash bags.
I got pulled over one residential can by my cop and it was Walmart bags and them things would just parachute some garbage up. You play this football, and you don't leave on milk, and I got it in the truck, I said, well, look, there's nothing I do with that.
Ms. Hill?
I noticed that new cans are not stable when you open them, they'll tilt easily, even the rain will blow them up, you know, so.
I don't know about that, but I, I don't know about that, I mean, I ain't seen them personally.
The containers meet the same specs.
Yeah, it's just once.
They're different manufacturers, but they meet the same specs.
Yeah, but they're narrower.
Yeah, once haul is getting like near another short supply, I mean, so.
And that's what, you know, I've been stopping and picking up pickers of garbage and putting them back in the can, but I won't stop doing that.
Yes, sir.
This one here, can you not, when you put up there, can you not specify the basic size of the can?
Well, we did with the 95 gallons, we specified out with the.
But you didn't say it could be as big as the 10 foot tall.
We did not specify that.
It's, it's just Ford Chevrolet, you know, I haven't explained, we got others, Ford Chevrolet, they're basically the same ones, just, but they can build exactly the same because, you know, Ford.
In our case, smoking or shit.
Something, yeah.
New cans are one gallon weirder than the old cans, actually.
Yeah, they're nine to six gallons.
How much more do y'all like getting everybody a new can, in my district, I've noticed still a lot of old cans.
As far as, as far as we know, we're following, I'm not saying that we are following, as far as we know.
So if somebody's still got an old can, what's the procedure?
We're gonna keep dumping them and as soon as we get all of this taken care of and we got all the service issues took care of, we're gonna put our park guy behind a truck and we will let y'all know, we'll let Lee know, hey, Lee, we're gonna do Ramberg today and he's gonna ride through Ramberg behind the truck and if they're not paying, we're gonna use the can. And if they're paying and have an old can, we're gonna swap them. But we're trying to get the, the service issues right before we turn it around and say, we're not picking up nothing but new cans.
But you did say you already.
I did.
The bills went up.
Yes, sir.
Old cans, new cans, the service went crap.
Yes, sir.
I mean, y'all could've spread this out a little bit, just to do it all in two months and that.
That's what we were talking about, it was just the fact it was the perfect storm, everything happened all at the same time, so. But with the parks, we're fighting the same issue now, they're trying to charge us, saying that they, the people who've done it, is saying that they done everything, whatever they did. And so we're fighting on their end, you know, either to try to get them to come back and finish their job or something, we're, me and Todd also working on that.
And there is a missing skill of calling shop. Yes, Ms. Cobb?
Credits, these people that's been skilled, you know, they're still gonna be able to give their credits for the weeks that they have not been serviced. Cause you know a lot of these people that's been skilled for three weeks, that's three weeks of nothing. And there's a lot of them out there and there's only, I mean, they shouldn't pay for things they did not get.
I understand that, yes, sir. Now, but that will require them calling in, they would have to call if the can identified that unless they called, let us know.
Or they go online, and it's a little bit quicker for them to do online than it is.
And so it would just be a credit to their account, correct?
Yes, sir. But they would have to like to say, they would have to contact us and discuss it with us first.
So the old cans that y'all picking up, those are another company's cans, right?
It was, it was that one, it was, some of them are, when it was repolled down here, some of them that I've seen was when, when I started years and years ago when it was bill dip, y'all remember, y'all was in there, I know Lee was here, there's some of them was repolled, there's some of them was onyx, some of them was a max disposal.
Cause sometimes what we find out is, once y'all go around and pick up all their cans, cause that's your remedy that you're losing, is because they got a can from wherever.
Yeah.
So once you pick them up, then they'll call and say, hey, I don't have a can, just because they didn't have an account.
Yes.
Cause I think the first time we did that period, we wound up with like 700 more customers.
We done, we done that in Cherokee County a few weeks ago, we're probably a month ago and because they got new cans too, we stopped picking up and I think within two weeks, we set up 300 or something new cans.
Right.
They would hit me, one guy stopped a driver and cussed him out, cause he'd been getting serviced for free for eight and a half years. And cussed him out and said, why, why, why did they come get my can, I hadn't paid in eight and a half years. So the same one, I'm like, I should be my garbage up and shut it down eight and a half years and you didn't have to pay for it, but he wanted to cuss the driver.
We're not knocking a pay for cans.
Surely the service issue, that's, that was the plan, is to have all the cans out there, have a date, all the services over there to pick up, so once the services, then that is the plan.
Can y'all generate a list of the houses that don't have a can?
I don't know if we can do a list with cows, houses that don't have cans, but we do send Lee and Jeanie sometime or another way, I've talked to her numerous times.
We do have the ability through the online stuff and the research to do that, it's not 100%, but it is pretty close and we're. We do have the ability through the online stuff and the research to do that, it's not one hundred percent, um, but it is pretty close, and we're just wanting that listed.
Well, one of the things that really happens, I think, the mission costs, we get a lot of phone calls, but we can look on there and say, well, you don't have an account, and, uh, and I think, I know that has helped Lee and Jeannie, so.
About, not all, because I think they have a can, but a lot of, lot that we get from Jeannie, we'll come up and they don't, they don't have a can. A lot of the ones that, I know Miss Scott will send me out that address, and I'll look up, and they won't, they won't be able to count. Whether it might be they gave the wrong address, I wrote it down wrong, she wrote it down wrong, but a lot of times we're able to figure out what the problem is, so, whether it not be a can or just the wrong house number person.
And when y'all send in clients, it is a question of goodness, and we do is call out very black cans, and, and lead go from there, so, that's, that's how that works.
Okay, before we make sure that we're getting y'all's in, and y'all make sure y'all get ours, whether it's skipping or smoking, we're locked in.
Anybody else?
We just keep texting y'all, there's needs for cans.
Yes, that's, yes, like you do.
Yes.
Can you text me that, or give me that, and I'll go look at it one more way? Yeah, is that it, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank y'all for coming, appreciate y'all coming, good to see you.
Thank you, good to see you.
Thank y'all for coming, man.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
If you have texts to do when I need it, I'll, I'll.
Miss Cochran, you're in the background.
I don't know that I've got another address, I want your phone number, name, and email.
You got a phone number?
Now, she did send me, like I said, she sent me a, a email, uh, from me, uh, she said she got two phone calls, you know, exactly.
It's still a big, a lot, yeah.
You all know Miss Cochran, she's with the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, she had asked to come and speak with you, and I told her I'd work her in, and, uh, she only has about, what, two hours?
Mm-hmm, that's all.
Okay.
All right, I'm Chrissy Cochran, so, I know most of you know me, I also brought my board secretary back here, Jesse Lyra, she's with Alabama Power. Um, so, the Chamber is incredibly, uh, grateful for the generous contribution that we are receiving from discretionary funds from Nora, Benny Metz. Um, your support's gonna be instrumental in kicking off our tourism efforts for Clever County, while working on our regional tourism efforts as well. So, as we look towards the future, we're exploring sustainable funding options to the Chamber. Since losing all our public funding in two thousand and nineteen, we feel the Chamber does not have adequate support of the county or the municipalities. Our goal for the Chamber movement ahead is to build a strong relationship with our local governments, so we can better service the community as a whole and operate as a Chamber is meant to. Ideally, we feel that a source of sustainable funding should come from the Commission. Our research shows that chambers in our region often will receive a percentage of lodging tax for a flat rate of support annually. With the rise of short-term rentals like VRBO and Airbnb's, we're collaborating with other tourism divisions to understand how they've incorporated these rentals into their local tax structures. The growing rate of short-term rentals in our areas suggests significant potential revenue. We believe a comprehensive lodging tax proposal should significantly benefit the Chamber and the tourism of our county. As the Chamber works to find a solution on implementing the collection of taxes on short, short-term rentals, we hope that the Commission will consider yearly monetary support of the Chamber. Um, as the Chamber continues to rebuild and grow stronger, we would also like to propose another option for the county in the future. To ensure the Chamber's continued success, we're exploring the creation of a new leadership position, a combined economic development and Chamber of Commerce Director. This innovative approach streamlines operations and maximizes our impact on the community. The proposal would include a dual director position, full-time, with the support of a part-time employee. We're proposing a unique compensation plan to attract a highly qualified leader. The salary will be in combination of commission-based earnings and a contribution from the Chamber. Additionally, we would like to explore the possibility of county employee benefits, creating a truly attractive package. We are confident that by working together, the Chamber and the Commission can achieve great things for Clever County. We're open to exploring, to exploring various avenues for collaboration. So, with all this said, the Chamber board members and I would appreciate the Commission's continued support, and we believe that these efforts will contribute to making Clever County's future an attractive place to live, work, and visit. So, thank you too, I appreciate you very, very much for having confidence in me and having confidence in the Chamber. Um, but we would like to, I hope that we can get your support annually, and then hopefully in the future, I know you're on a three-year contract with the city of Heflin, and I know Tammy is about to retire for another five years, so I don't know what that will look like, but I would like for us to try to work together over these next couple of years, to see if this position might work, so.
I, I think it's something that we need to look at, where we have more support out in the county, and, and the south end of the county, and the north end of the county. I think, I think, I think we sort of get washed sometimes with the, with the small detail that feels on you, you're working at the city, or if it was more.
He only has, so he only. And Robbie is supportive of the, of economic, of moving into the Chamber. Um, he did, I guess, try to persuade Tammy it's moving into our office, but that was, it's been about a year since that was proposed, and it hasn't happened, so I, and it hasn't been brought up anymore.
It seems like we would work hand and hand in ways, that it would be better if we were in the same building.
Yeah, absolutely, and I mean, even if he wasn't, you know, Robbie was saying that he would come in and build in another office within the Chamber, so we would both have, you know, the Chamber Director and the Economic Development Director would have an office, and me and her could work together. But it just hasn't played out that way, I don't think Tammy, they don't think she really wants to leave the city of Heflin. But Robbie, you know, and who, who knows when his term comes up, I mean, we all hope he might be re-elected, but you never know. But, um, he wants it out of his home, out of his house, is what he has with him, that he would love for us to collaborate together, so.
So, we will all work together and we'll find a way to make things happen?
Sounds good, and thank y'all for hearing the excellent, I appreciate y'all.
Thank you for coming, hey, you do a great job. It was sort of wild on this weekend, this past weekend, I mean, not this weekend, the weekend last. So, I didn't get to see you up there at RV, because barbecue was good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was a little bit, that was a little chaotic, they're a little weird.
Yeah, they're a little different.
They're very, I won't say weird, they're a little reserved.
Yeah.
They didn't want any publicity, like, they didn't want anything like that, but, so.
And everybody was scared to stop working, I mean, they were, they were working, because that, everybody out top said, well, I gotta get back out on the yard.
Yeah, I was like, uncomfortable, I'm like, okay, well, I'm gonna go back to work now.
I'm going back for a little more.
I didn't see, but he's been really great.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I just ask, on behalf of the board, I, I just wanna say, um, our board has really been working hard over the last three years to really turn the Chamber around and get it to where it needs to be. Christie, as the, as Executive Director, has been amazing, and she went on the board, and then we, um, put her into this position, and she's the perfect person to get where it needs to be with relationships in this county. We've already seen so many tangible results of having her in her position, and so, I know we've talked a lot about Tammy and the future of that position, but we know that, you know, she will not be around working forever, and so, even if it is something that has to come three to five years from now, um, with the size of our community and the funding opportunities available, it just makes so much sense to, to, to merge the two functions and really be able to operate as one full-time employee. And so, but Christie's been wonderful, and I just want y'all to know that our board is very committed to making sure that the Chamber is functioning the way it should and representing our county the way it should, so, I just wanted to say it on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for having us.
Y'all wanna hang out?
Hmm?
Y'all wanna hang out?
Well, I don't mind hanging out.
Now, be kidding.
I don't have to get all the bits out, so, don't do it, Richard, Richard, they all later.
Sheriff?
Oh, my God, it's good, um, it's gonna be added.
And he asked, um, do we have that to do business, I'm like, I'm looking at it.
I second it.
Um, uh, did anybody get a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of adding this to your business concerning the surplus? Say aye.
Aye.
No, she cares, so we'll, we'll vote on it in a few minutes, but, did y'all wanna ask you any questions concerning this?
Are they just pieces?
They're not in pieces, but they're like very high mileage, one of them's about to got a motor that's gone, one of them's got a transmission and motor, and then the Explorer is just a ticking time bomb, it's about a ball of pieces.
I mean, are they extra vehicles you got now?
Oh, we're just, you know, we're three deputy short, or two SROs, one deputy short, we just hired one SRO, we started today. We hired a deputy last week, so, we're still one SRO short, so we're, we got that car, and maybe one mower, I believe, that are not.
So, you don't really have an extra?
Not really, not sure, we got maybe one spare, but it, I mean, it's not a great vehicle, but it'll get us by, it's a lot better than the Explorer that we, was using, so.
Uh, but have you talked to more with Randy about that on the license plate?
No, I haven't talked to him more about that, but, he said that would be probably towards the end of the year, start working on it toward the end of the year, and then start the twenty-five year, so.
So, I would probably take your time on.
Yeah.
If it's in a year, okay. So, we just need to keep reaching out to Randy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce, Ms. Fuller?
I, I just wanted to touch base with y'all, what we're adding collections and, and reassessing. Uh, probably most of you, if you haven't already received, if you will be receiving, a pretty little letter from me, um, from Board of Environmentalization, setting the values for property in Clever County, which, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say at this point, it's up, the values are up, and it's mostly concerning people moving into our county, paying a whole lot more for the, the properties than what we had them valued, valued at in previous years. I do know this, that, um, the cost of building properties, um, structures in, in this state are well elevated compared to what they were five, ten years ago. So, you're seeing properties that we used to get, you know, eighty or ninety dollars a square foot, now you can't build anything for less than a hundred and thirty-five. I mean, it's just, it's, it's impossible to get that base scale, that's why you're seeing a lot of these little tiny homes come into all the, the entire state. You're seeing people downsizing and going to tiny homes and putting it on, you know, a five-acre track, and, and, uh, paying very little money on those. Uh, we are at the end of collections for twenty twenty-three, I think we're down probably, I'm gonna say about a hundred and thirty now, I think at the beginning of the day, it was about a hundred and forty-six, so we've had a good, a good amount of people paid today. Um, these are our regular that are always late, um, I'm, I'm not really panicking, that that number's pretty high compared to what it normally has been in the past, but I feel like those will come up and pay. Um, but that's where we're at, you should receive a couple more, um, tax payments before we gear up to collect in October, yes, sir.
So, new houses, you figuring it, how much a square foot that it's taking to build that house now?
Um, now, your, your base house is, is over a hundred and twenty-five, it's, it's about a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and thirty dollars a square foot to build a house.
Okay.
Um, that, in the past, that we have some things, we have some buildings, replacement cost buildings, that are less than seventy dollars a square foot, you can't buy for seventy dollars a square foot.
But my question is, so, so every house that this in the county, you gonna change a house that was built twenty years ago, or is it gonna, once it's repaired?
No, it, it still gets depreciated, so, in other words, what has happened is, we've had all these big sales within the state, and y'all probably heard about this cap rate, that they're trying to put on all the properties? I'm not saying I'm, I'm not against that, because my property went up too bad, yes, yeah, everybody's, everybody's dead. That cap, there's, there's some implementations on the cap, but that five percent cap would have been great if it was already in place for me already. I'm kinda like y'all are on the end, you know, I don't wanna be caught on bridges down where I'm having to chase people that, you know, about their garbage all the time, and people saying, well, you represent garbage, well, I represent taxes, so, you know, at the end of the day, they're looking at me saying, hey, you've raised our taxes. I didn't, I only implemented the taxes. The raise was done when all of these people from outside sources came in here and bought houses for a hun, that we had valued at a hundred thousand, and they paid four hundred thousand for it. That's the problem, and we're seeing that all over the county, you're probably getting the same, uh, you're probably getting calls from that, uh, from.
I just play on you.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, via, via, I am, I am property taxes for Clever County, so I understand it, and we have been answering calls all day, because of board notices came in, and their, their property taxes went up fifteen percent. I get it, I'm one of those people, I completely get it, I got the phone call from my husband this afternoon, and it said, hey, why are my taxes up fifty dollars on this one building? Well, because you can't replace it for that.
So, so, so y'all go up on taxes every year, I know here, not here, I'm going to go up on something, right?
No, um, you're talking about downtown Heflin, downtown Heflin changes, okay, so we do a ratio study every year, and, and it tells us where we're falling. Are we within that ninety-eight and one oh-two percent? And the state keeps making that, that number smaller and smaller, it used to be like ninety-six to one oh-four, and they want us to fall up one percent, but nobody's at one percent. So, that index and that ratio study, the ratio study is done every year, and we had a mass reappraisal this time, so everybody in the county got hit by this one. The ratio study in downtown Heflin has changed every year for the same reason I just told you. The houses in downtown Heflin have sold for the last fifty, COVID was terrible for our county as far as pricing. Um, immediately, people started moving out of the big cities, wanting a smaller place and a smaller town, and they were willing to cash out their retirement, pay cash, and buy these houses for astronomical amounts of money. And if you don't believe that, you just come down there and I'll show you the Excel spreadsheet where, where we show it.
So, the ratio.
Yes, sir.
For the past, every year, you say, you go up on the city of Heflin.
Well, the city of Heflin has increased for the last, the last four years, for sure.
Last four years.
Yeah, for sure.
So, uh, what I'm saying is, so now, with all the increase in the city of Heflin, so then we're going up fifteen more percent.
Across.
On all, all of what you go to the shop.
Yes.
And, uh, so what makes, I don't, I don't understand if my, in the county, how it really, because the county's booming out there too, because everywhere I go.
Oh, they're moving everywhere, that's why I said, they're moving everywhere, this.
But, but, but Heflin gets charged a ratio every year.
Well, no, everybody does, the whole, the whole county does, some of them don't increase as much as other places.
But you said it's especially the city of Heflin.
Uh, well, the city of Heflin is where you have the bulk of your residential properties.
Yeah.
Most of your homes, so.
Yes, yes.
But you're also at a higher millage rate.
Yeah, and you're at a higher millage rate, which makes it feel like you've, you've increased, you know, some enormous amount when it's really based on millage.
So, if it's, so if you do the, the, the ratio in the city of Heflin, so if I look at my tax two years ago, and I look at everybody else's tax in the city of Heflin, theirs one is the same as mine?
Probably so, and now, now, listen, you've got depreciation that's in, included, you've got improvements, so your neighbor may have put a new roof on, and our appraiser may have called it, that's gonna increase the value of your property, that's what she's looking at, has anything been taken away, or has it been added to?
So, put a new roof on, you gotta have a roof, so if you put on a new roof, that increases the value of the house because you put the roof back on?
Uh, uh, yes, sir, and you, you, you can understand that you've been in construction, yeah, it increases the value, yes, sir, yeah.
Do you want to pose as a pusher?
So, well.
No, I'm, I was just kidding, I'm like, I don't blame you.
Oh, well, you can, you can, everyone else is.
Well, I was trying, I was trying to figure out, uh, as you, as you look at, because I'm, I'm always looking at taxes, so I, I, I look at all the taxes, and I see my property, and other properties, and, and I see.
Okay.
You know, I, I follow the increase.
So, I'm gonna tell you this, I can't even debate taxes, you all said that, I did not. You told me how many mills to collect for the county, you told me how many mills to collect for the state, you told me how many mills to collect for the city, I am not responsible for taxes.
So, if the mill is, is the mill is ranked the same as it was ten years ago, twelve years ago?
It's been the same forever, that's right, for thirty-seven years or so, yes.
Thirty-seven mills in the county?
Yes.
Plus twelve in the city of Heflin.
Twelve, twelve in the city of Heflin, twelve in Ranburn, twelve in Fruithurst, and, uh, six in Edmondson. Twelve in the city of Heflin, twelve in Randburn, twelve in Fruithurst and, uh, six in Edelton.
So, so the millage rate was set 40 years ago.
Yeah, that's why I said, that's what sets your taxes. The values times the, the way that property's being used. So if you have a property that's being lived in by the owner, it's taxed at 10%. And then that, uh, the market value times the 10% times the millage is how the taxes are created. So if you come before a board of equalization and you wanna complain about taxes, they're not gonna listen to you. You better have some form of information that's, that says, hey, my house is not worth $250,000. Show me. Do you have an outside appraisal that says it's less than 250? Do you, what's your insurance price on that? What do you have in insurance? Cause you're gonna insure it for what the replacement is. Yes, sir.
The reason people are so mad is not only property tax comes up, the insurance comes up.
It's everything.
My insurance went up 27%.
Yes. And your food hasn't gone down and your.
My next, my next thing is this, this bill that's going before the committee on cabinet, the ACCA estimated Cleveland County would lose $200,000 a year. Do you, do you agree with that?
See, I see it from a different perspective. A five percent cap on something is still an increase, right? So I can't cap something that doesn't increase. So if it's increased 10%, you've got a five percent cap. You're still gonna get a five percent more on that property than you did the year before. Does that make sense to you?
And I got another question. That same deal there, so the next year you're gonna get the other five percent.
That's correct. So all they're doing is postponing, we're gonna get the five percent. But now, so let's say that you, you have a five percent cap. And let's say for some reason we have a downturn in, in sales and stuff starts bottoming out and we have a lot of foreclosures and all that stuff starts happening. Okay, we kept you at five percent. We do that ratio study every year. And the ratio says, hey, properties should come down 15%. I'm not gonna collect 5%, I'm coming down 15. Makes sense? We did that in 2010 when we had the, the decline, yeah. We, we were about two years behind the, the national average in, in that 2008, 2009 year when everything was downturned and they said it was gonna be the great recession. And then it said, well, maybe not. And, well, it took two years for us to catch up with that. Our buildings, we put a 10% reduction on anything that had a structure standing on it. If it had a structure in 2010, we collected 10% less on all of those. So I am not telling you that it's not coming down. I feel like that it's so excessive right now, but there's nothing I can do about it. The sales are robbing it.
Across the country is, is.
The sales are robbing it. And we have people from California that are, that are coming in and spending four or five million dollars for a piece of land and a house. I don't know how we're going to, uh, we got, we've got dirt roads selling land at thirteen thousand dollars an acre. And I can prove that. You can come back to the office and I can prove all of that to you. This is, this is crazy and I hate it, but it is what it is.
Yeah, they're actively out there hunting too. They got a call last week.
They're looking for your property and mine and everybody else's, yeah.
I got forty-eight acres where I live and they're like, would you sell it all? Will you sell the house? Will you sell me one acre?
Right.
You know?
Yeah, you know, we've had some splits where somebody will buy a house and fifteen acres and keep fifteen acres. And they'll sell fifteen acres in the house for 450 and we didn't have the whole thing, the whole kit and caboodle at 200. I mean, I don't know how y'all want me to control that.
When you did that, how do you address the land that they get?
Okay, so an index study, study is done every fourth year. An index study, that will be this coming year, this next coming year. And so we're gonna be looking at the values of the land. Unfortunately, you don't have a whole lot of land values where you've got like an acre lot is selling with nothing on it. Typically, you're talking about large acre tracts, that they're buying a hundred acres and there's nothing on it. So that index study should, with some of these sales, should, should help us to see where the land values really are. But unfortunately, right now, they're up, 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 up. Tell people stop buying it.
Joyce, what would you say to the, the amount? You've got everything collected, all the things that you've collected.
Yes.
We're up or we're down?
Oh, you're way up in collections. Yeah, you're way up in collections. I'm. I have to, I have to look at that. I, I, I wish I'd brought that with me because, yeah, y'all are way up in, in collections because we were way up in property values and people are still building. So, yeah.
Do we get a part of the commission? How much, how much commission is the commission gets?
Y'all get, um, now, just depending on what you're talking about, you get five mills for, um, the general fund. You get three for, no, four, yeah, three for rugs and bridges. There's four hospital tax, which I, I know that, but that's a vis a vis y'all, four mills on, on the hospital. Uh, you also get the tax assessor, tax collector fees that I collect on every property. Y'all get that as well. And so it's, it's a pretty good, pretty good number too, so. But I, just, just for warning y'all, you probably have that ugly letter from me and the, and the man.
Yeah, I'm good.
And, and, and the steps are, you, you come to the appraiser, talk it over with the appraiser, see if there's any adjustments that can be made because of obsolescence or maybe you removed something from the property that we still have appraised on the property. Those kind of things first and then sign up for the board of equalization. And I encourage that completely and totally. I encourage it, I always have. I have never wanted someone not to go before the board of equalization because where our hands are tied, theirs are not. If they see a reason that, hey, that shouldn't go up that much, they can put a one, one-time, uh, hold on that and give it a value and that's what we're gonna collect on is that value. So I encourage that. Do that if you would like to, tell your constituents, do the same. I'm happy with them doing that. Um, and we'll see where, where it all falls out. Yes, and thank y'all. Yes, sir.
So you never really answered my question.
Yes, sir. What did you?
About the, the proposed.
The five percent cap?
Yeah.
Well, I did. I said that five percent.
But did you, do you agree with it?
I don't, I don't think I agree with that. And I don't know where they got those figures. Um, I believe.
I think they went back to two, 2020, 2021, it's where, but I don't know how they did it.
But you're looking at a past value. Now, when we're looking at a present value, you're still collecting off the present value. And if, if I said to you, everybody's got a 15% increase, you would only be collecting 5% more. So is that less than what you collected the year before or not? That's five percent more?
So you don't agree?
So I'm, I'm telling you that I, I don't know where they got the figures. I can't even tell you how they came to how they did that. I don't know. Um, I know it's gonna be a nightmare to implement it.
Would it not be based on different areas, like Cleveland County and sales have been up so tremendously?
Yeah, we have been.
But maybe like in Montgomery, they have it then or adjust to get it.
Maybe, maybe. I don't know what, how they, I, I really don't know how that, maybe Ryan, Ryan, do you know how they came up with the ACCA? Came up with that, that numbers? Because I'm just a math person and when you tell me you're capping something. When you're capping something, that means that you're going up on something. So how could that be less?
Well, I mean.
You know what I'm saying?
The question was, then how did the ACCA come up with their, say, their formula to cost us that much money?
Well, I think the way it's always just the one to come up with.
Well, come up with a cap, but I mean, they're trying to.
I think the ACCA figured it somewhere.
They're trying to.
We would lose as a county if they figured it.
And, 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 and I would say that that's a loss on potential, not on present. Does that make sense? So that could be, potentially you would be losing $250,000 in this year, but next year I'm gonna gain it. You know what I'm saying?
So what you're saying is, what they're saying is, if you bought a house, but if you sold it for a hundred thousand more than it was appraised for, do they say, hold that to, to the existing tax that was there or are they saying raise the tax? I mean, that's a hard, hard.
Well, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare on implementation because it, it's gonna have to be set up in the system so that we can say, okay, this house is included because it didn't have any new improvements. It didn't have any substantial improvements to the, this structure. So we're gonna cap it. So it was gonna go up 15, but now we can only do five. And so we're gonna implement a 5% increase this year. Then next year we'll implement the next five and then the following year we'll implement the next five. Okay, unless something happens and it goes in the reverse. Yes, sir. Yeah, I saw, I saw that on the ACCA's website. And what they're taking is they're taking our net revenues that we had for, what years were those? Twenty, 2021?
But that's all the state available.
That's right. But those, these are just split for county. Yeah, they did each county like that. They took all of our necremenses. They, those necremenses are what we sent to the state every year before final settlement. Those necremenses are what we issued to the state for those years. Um, I still don't quite understand how they got the loss. Now, loss as opposed to 5% is less than 15. So if, if I'm appraising something and it's gonna go up 15%, but I can only collect five, yes, you have a loss of 10% on that piece of property for that year. But you're still collecting 5% more than we did the year before. Does, does everybody understanding that?
This says 3%.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think the, the bill says five.
I told you on too, because it says we'll lose 414,000.
Okay, well, that's a lot.
I don't know. I don't know how they got it, so.
Well, they, they're capping and saying if all of the properties in Cleveland County went up more than 5% anything above that 5% you're losing today. Does that make sense? I assume that that's how they got their, their setup.
So right now we're looking at 15, so if they put a cap on it, it'll only be five?
No, they're, we're gonna miss the whole cap.
I know that.
I'm fishing. I mean, y'all are gonna be lucky because.
What I'm saying is, if we waited till next year.
Oh, if they waited till next year, yeah, it'd be 5% cap. But because it's already holding its value right now, because that cap is not gonna be retrod, it's gonna be to the forward. For any properties assessed on October 1 of 2024, we have already, for 2024 tax collections, which is in the rears, they're not changing that. They're changing to the front. So you'll still collect all of these taxes for this year. Y'all are actually one of the lucky counties in that your cap is not coming into play until next year.
I don't feel too.
I don't feel lucky either, not personally. And, and I know, but for county, for county revenues, I mean, you're lucky in that, that you're not, you're not looking at losing, you know, $400,000 because of this. And all of this came across because other counties have already done their yearly reassessment of all properties. You had Etowah County, and I think that's one of the counties where this originated from. Uh, Etowah County, two years ago, yes, two years ago, theirs went up 38%. And that's where this all came from. Where is the, where, where are we gonna stop this, the bleeding, so to speak? Because all of these people coming in from Georgia, California, other states, um, Florida, they're, they're coming here in growth, they're buying stuff at astronomical amounts and they don't care. They don't care what their neighbors are gonna have to pay. And so this would protect, this would protect homeowners who have been living in their properties for a amount of time. It will not help a new owner. It will not cap it on a new owner. So if you bought in that cap, it's not going to affect you. It's very.
It's really not bad then because, of course, they're talking about hypothetical money.
I, I, I think I told you when I first came here, I was born. I said, just.
They figured this over 21 and 22. And if it, it's hypothetical money, it's not real money.
Yes, that's exactly what I wanted you to understand. It is not real money. Yeah. So, I mean, you know, 5% of nothing is still nothing, but 5% of, uh, seven million dollar, uh, collections is a lot.
It's a, and I'll tell a good story. I got some friends that moved out here. Oh, they was happy to sell because they get just what I can buy for what I sold. Well, now they wanna go back. It's impossible. They can't go back.
They can't buy that. No, they cannot buy that.
Why is what up so much out there that they can't move back?
I know. And then they bring their ways with them.
I've got them on my street.
They, they got a lot of stronger cars.
I, I appreciate the job y'all do and just remember this, and I am, I am one of you when this comes, comes down the line. I understand, uh, I am not a fan of the rates going up, but I am also not a fan of these people looking in and, you know, making our, our taxes go up. Um, and that's, at the end, that's what we're looking at. I'm looking at values, but at the end, as a taxpayer, I'm looking at what my cost is. You know, is that fitting in within my budget? And it's, it's a lot.
It's not, it's here, because I got land top listing, and they do look like people calling me every week, we sell it, we sell it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get it all the time too.
I'm asking myself.
Yeah, so you keep coming up, keep coming up. Give me that 13 grand an acre, maybe we'll talk about it, right?
Just a little bit more than.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's not being able.
Right. Well, you can always remember this, small acreage is worth more than big acreage. It's per capita because you're, it's, it's because of supply and demand. I may not be able to spend $25,000 an acre for 50 acres, but I might for one or two. So you gotta think of it in that, that sense of the word. That's why so many people, if they're selling off in small acreage, you have to say that stuff's going for astronomical.
Yeah, it, it's gonna get you anywhere it goes. So when you sell it, you're gonna pay them.
Yeah.
And I tell you what, I, I, that selling property is like a bad way to go sometimes. I'm hoping they try to take it on.
So we get the call, who we gonna pay? I've got plenty of them.
Well, you know, we get the call, you know, my, you've got my house at $47,000 and some of that county, we've got some small houses that are 47 and that went up 10,000 from last year. I get it, that's a big increase. But tell me what you can sell it for. Oh, I would get a, you know, take it a dime less than 150 for it. Well, okay. So there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no bid opening, no awards, presentations, no stadium public queue. You don't have a stadium public queue for that road. Consent agenda. Looks like everything was initial. I like the motion there too.
I see it.
Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we have a resolution, new business now that was added and Mr. Oden, you might read that for us?
Whereas Cleveland County Sheriff has requested the commission authorize three listed vehicles, a 2018 Chevrolet Tahoe, 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe and 2014 Ford Explorer to be declared surplus to be sold at auction. And whereas the funds realized from sub sale are to be applied to line item 550 for purchase and equipment of future vehicles. Now therefore, be it resolved, the commission approves the sheriff's request and directs the surplus and sale of the three vehicles with the proceeds to be earmarked to line item 550 for future vehicles.
I like the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, reports are staffed. Do y'all, um, Lee, you say you got a nice phone name. Is that all right? Y'all okay with Lee doing?
I don't. It's okay.
Anybody okay with that? Go ahead, Lee.
I really don't, yeah, that's.
Okay. Any questions for Lee?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've seen on Facebook where a lot of people are inquiring about the list. That's the reason I was asking West management about a list.
So the answer that we, we've been given when they call and ask, just explain to the grandfather of laws and what it says in that law.
What, what about the ones that ain't gonna call? It's just gonna do it. So they gonna drop their service? How are we gonna know when they drop their service?
When they drop their service, we get a list and so far it's been around a hundred every quarter that's dropped out. We send letters to get them back on. Uh, so if they drop service, then we know they dropped. The ones that we've got to get a handle on, the ones that's moving in and has never had a service, that's the ones that we've got to find. If they've ever had it at camp, when you build a link, they'll be.
What about the verification, do you? I got a couple of votes that they put in prison, but, uh, what are y'all doing on that?
We, uh, we're writing citations. Gina was actually in court today on, on, on the. So we're just working through that process. So we're just working through that process as it goes. We send a one letter, send a final letter, send a citation, send four dates, and just work.
Typically, what does a judge do when one of those comes up?
Um, I typically it's if they get five hundred dollars a night. If they, you know, as long as the evidence is there and we have plenty of pictures back there and all the evidence, they typically follow it.
Is there additional consequences for certain things?
We just do.
Another five hundred dollars?
Five hundred.
All right, Ian, question for Lee?
All right, I'm I'm good with the going, if everybody's good with Lee going?
I'm good, I'm good.
Ian, coach baseball. Just hand your phone on in the morning, will you? She's saying.
She's early enough.
Call her with the score tonight. All right.
The only thing I have is um, the sales tax information that may be used in the documentation. Um, if anyone has suggestions, I'll again put that to bed, please let me know.
Mr. Hendrickson, something inspired by that?
Yeah, I'm I'm not really excited, but I would like to give you either a meeting with the commission and the mortgage case, or a meeting with a couple of us and Lisa and some representatives from the board. I don't know where we need to send them later or what, because if they're calling them, saying they don't do it, not to do any good. So I've just been going on for months. If we just sit down at a deck of tables, it can be worked out by.
I I really honestly believe the best way, and Mr. Oden, I asked you, you'd be the superintendent himself, come and speak.
Probably the superintendent on the science, actually.
But if you don't set a date, we're just kicking this can down the road.
I'm not setting a date, getting to come to a commission meeting, or set a date for me.
Is that is that what you're gonna do? Because I was listening to one of the board members, that was, I told you what he said, so.
He's a board member, this is.
I understand, understand, but what I'm saying is, is we need to get to the bottom of it, because I'm part of our business.
Yeah.
So if we can get uh whoever, uh, I'd be glad to meet with Terry and, but I just don't want somebody to come in that might be a little, might need one of us there to explain things sometimes. So if it's gonna be Chad, I don't have a problem that me and Terry wants to be there.
Okay.
Or you you and Terry, you're not.
Now, as of right now, this this document that I sent you guys and also printed out for you, I have not sent that. I've kind of sent a version of that in answer to questions for them. But um, I would be glad to point this to them.
But you can walk through it with the way you.
She is she is up there waiting, and I, it makes sense. I mean, it doesn't take five minutes, and I I'm just waiting here.
So one of the one of the hundred and seven thousand and something, I think that's one of the, on your female. So are they missing a check, is that what you're saying?
They're not missing a check, they're not missing any checks. Every check we have sent down has put it to the bank.
Right.
Um, except for the one that we're bringing today. But um, what they're doing is their timing is different on how they're recording things. And normally, it's not a big deal because we're still counting a twelve month period of sales tax revenue. It's not the same twelve months that we count, but it's twelve months. But because of changing over the Alabama Department of Revenue, they're they're a month behind where they should be. They should have counted a hundred thousand more in sales tax revenue.
So what what I'm saying is 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 this. So in twenty twenty one, what did we collect? I don't care what their dates are, but if you collect from January to December, I'm saying, and that's what we collected in those twelve months. Now, they were collecting their money at that time from Avenue, correct?
Right.
Right. So what I'm saying is, and so I guess now that we finally get to change, there's a very little bit of money being collected from Avenue. What I'm saying is, is whatever our twelve months is, is say, this is what we collect from January to December. That's what we collect. They get half of it. This is how much we got. How much did y'all get? So I don't care if they wanna go from October to September, or whatever they do it on a cash basis, as we talked about. But I just want them to know, and and this year got real good conversation at uh the restaurant that they wanted a board member. But but I just want him to know that in twelve months, this is what we collect. We don't want to keep any of the school board's money, and we don't. But but if they're, and that's what I try to explain, if they're on a different timetable than us, then that's, I mean, all we can do is say, this is what we collect. Because now the check comes to us, no question coming up here. So and you, and I think I talked to you about this. So when when uh, so when we collect that money, we send it to them, half the money. But one thing he said that said to me was, well, we pay y'all to write that check. I said, y'all pay us for write that check? He says, yeah. He says, it's in the resolution that y'all collect the fee. Well, if there is a fee to be collected, then I'm all for it. Because on a median, I think somewhere around there what they collect off that one cent sales tax. We have never charged a school a fee, as far as I know, and I would like to verify that we're not charging any same. But now, now let me say this, the state and Avenue collects a fee, but has nothing to do with us.
Right. But it's not.
So so whatever the taxes are up, and I guess they charge the city of heaven the same fee, because the city of heaven, the state of Avenue. They still collect theirs from Avenue. So there's a lot of taxes that's coming from the state and lots of taxes they're still getting from Avenue, I guess, because, which they don't collect, if they just kept from the city's taxes, ours are still all. So when we make our decisions to go with the state, all of our taxes, including the schools' tax, comes to us now. And then we write a check to the school, tax free, tax of any. We don't charge them a one percent or a median high for write that check, twelve checks a month. We write about twelve checks a year. That's about what I'm thinking. So whatever that money is that we collect, and uh, then we just need to say, like we talked about the other day, these are the checks that have cleared the bank, this is how much we sent, and then this is what we collect. I think it's a little bit of a little bit of a ratchet because of us changing from Avenue over to the state. But we don't charge, we are happy to write the school their check and and to monitor and make sure they get half their money. But I just want to make sure, because when I was told that we're collecting, taking the money away from the school, I know me and Mr. Todd wouldn't be on board with that, because even when we did that building, though, where we give them a uh a four million dollar building for a dollar.
I don't think you guys are interested in taking money.
Is that right?
I think there's a misunderstanding about.
So so.
Let me ask this, a long time ago, when I when I came to work with the county commission, um, we were with Avenue. It wasn't called Avenue, they changed their name.
It's RDS.
Yeah, it goes back. While the county, I understood, went with RDS, even though they charged a fee, but they were so much quicker at getting the money. Is there a delay from the department revenue these days?
There's not. It's it's pretty much the same, they send four or five payments throughout the month. But, okay, so if we're collecting revenue from now in October, it's for September's sales. That's when the store owners or who or what the vendors are sending in the money. The Alabama Department of Revenue is receiving, say, in October. Well, what we're doing is we're waiting to the end of October, you know, and total of what they do, which requires us actually running a couple of months into a couple of days into a new month. And then we're sending them a check for exactly half of correctly, the sales and sales tax.
For that month of that year.
And see, for us, it's not a big deal because we are on a hurdle system where we're counting in the period in which we earned that money. But the school board is not doing that. They're they're running everything on a cash basis accounting, and they're not counting that money until they get it. And so because of that, normally, their Avenue receipts that they were getting, they were counting everything that they received. And remember, it was for November, even though it was actually October's sales tax. Well, they're even further behind the Alabama Department of Revenue. So they're basically missed a month. It's like they are short a whole month of sales tax because of the way they.
Why would the county go with another company and pay more a long time ago? That's just what I wonder. I don't remember. I thought it was because the state held on to that money. Have you ever heard of that?
True.
But why would why would you think that the county might have done that a long time ago? Because I mean, that that's before my time.
Probably because slick sales rep came in and talked up a good game.
Probably.
And said, we can do more for you than the state can, and that's what they were with. I would hear.
Same reason they agreed with maintenance on all the watercages.
Yeah.
I would say that the Alabama Department of Revenue, their customer service is much, much better, are they not? Their customer service, Alabama Department of Revenue, their customer service.
Their revenue is a lot more.
The other benefit of the Department of Revenue is they have the enforcement.
Right, they do have enforcement there.
Which a private company doesn't have.
Okay.
I mean, there's advantages and disadvantages to either. But as of right now, I we have finally gotten to kind of settling, and I'm happy to balance.
But why why we're sitting here? Because it's gone like a tick back and forth, I think. Is our taxes up or is our taxes down?
We're down about a little over three percent, not very much.
Oh.
And that's normal.
Sales tax, not?
Not SSUT.
Yeah, I'm just talking about.
Just sales tax.
Yeah. So you're down about three percent.
Right. And if the school board had actually counted all the payments that, like they know they would have, they got that extra payment, they would have been down two point three nine percent, how much that would have been down. So not very much, but the passerback kept a hundred thousand dollars in the rep.
That's a big, that's a big, and that's a hundred and trying to keep that you put in this amount, yeah.
Revenue.
Okay. So what we'll do is, Ryan, you wanna reach out to?
Yeah, I'll give him a call.
And uh, do you wanna be in there with Terry or?
Yeah, I'll, I mean.
You good here?
We three don't need to be in.
Yeah, we're we're Terry's one, Terry's where he came from.
Y'all two can, y'all y'all don't need it. No.
I won't be here this week, I'll be here next week.
I mean, what I want, I want to get it done.
Yeah, I'm probably hearing it.
Before the end of the week or next week or whatever. I mean, I'll be glad to do whatever I think I need to do.
So then we'll do it this week? Can you get set up for this week?
I can try. All I can do is see what he's doing. Because I tried to even come one day, he couldn't, he couldn't make it that afternoon meeting, she knows.
I mean, if you set that with us, I mean, Lisa will explain it to them, even in that, it's simple. It's real simple when you got the sheets laid out there.
But you need to find actual person.
Well, one board meeting, one time there was two hundred thousand, then it went to sixty, then it went to thirty, so.
Let me let me say this, uh, can we uh, once y'all meet, we need a verdict from whoever you're talking with, if they understand it, and if this is what it is. And then the who the superintendent and their financial officer needs to send a letter to the board that says, we have it resolved. Not that we're still working on it, we need to get it resolved or.
Please make sure they understand that we're not torturing them. Also, I would say one more thing. Top double arena upturned two weeks ago, and she was actually, she got one month for her revenue, just the report from us to show what we had collected for one month. And she picked a month in the middle of the year, which is fine. And she is actually double checking the percentages that the state's collecting, the correct percentages to make sure that some things are off. And she said, they're showing like, you know, they have X amount of dollars, it's a loss, and that's a good bid. And I said, well, let me tell you, this is what's going on. And she said, that makes perfect sense. She said, that explains a lot of what is going on. So I think that by then having already looked at the school board's revenue, I think that it would have been a big big red flag to them that if we had not given them something that they should have gotten. I think they would have been able to figure that out pretty quickly that we had shorted the school board. And and they're not saying that, they're just double checking all the percentages. But the other thing, too, is, and I've I've suggested this, I've offered this, I think there is a way that we might could actually, I don't know, at this point, it won't matter because you're still counting twelve months versus twelve months. But we could actually do an EFT for the school board, just like Avenue sends an EFT to them. We could actually send that as an EFT and send them a percent, their percentage on a write a check, and then we'd get it a little bit quicker. Um, I I don't know that it solves the problem.
What would you mean, have a record on how it's done, correct?
Oh, yeah. We can have the record of it, just want to get a check. I just like a paper check, because then you've got a copy of your paper check that shows it's clear. And I mean, I like that part of it. Have you reached out to Alabama to see if they will cut that check separate, do it on? I have, that's the first thing I've tried. Some of them have said they don't want it.
All right.
I'm not even sure I understood something.
Yes, sir.
They said they, that they would do it, and they want it.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Oden is asking for a little break.
For a minute or something.
Yeah. Like a little recess.
If not, have me just cut.
He can borrow a chair, you know.
John, can you say? I have to ask John. I think she said John, I thought.
Yeah, there's a ton of, we're clear, nothing on here. They definitely want us playing here three hours.
Exactly. It's my fault.
It's all right.
I'm good, how about you?
I'm good.
Our time, our time, everybody's time. So while the children have legalized over here. Uh, I said, please. And if you're lucky, we just attached that, it was like a compass. I would have saved about three hundred dollars.
When you pay thirty dollars for the uh.
They're working on money, and I don't know what they're handling, I don't think they're collecting it legally. I think, I just occurred that it goes to the tax money that they're holding. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
But I would have to have. The next question was.
Yes, this this part, yes.
I heard it, it's not very easy. Especially like saying, you know, air management. I'm trying to do it back to the family. I've had all the legislature, you know, y'all made that legislature, everybody was part of it. Yeah, yes, but and about, you know, signing up. They got this item, they were supposed to, and they really wanted to have some of that. But it's, that's exactly, and that's why I said, I'm happy to do that. I'm trying to call them, I didn't match them up, so every everyone. Now, we did have seen this, we did live on the land. He's going to be in all the places. I'm always, we say, we're just putting it in there for everybody, it's information, information. But thank you. You have been told we have to stay in that class. Yes, yes. Kevin, Kevin can't turn, uh, back to me, because they have all the lights. Yes, not just because you got to do it, I said, I'm ready, I said, three minutes. Well, they are going to take it that way some, and then you fell off it, and then they ran it from my estate. And that makes it, it didn't really exist.
You do realize you have to go away all the time. Every single one of them. And and memorize it. We didn't wait, there were two signs up for you.
Oh, he's got more of an idea than I have. I tell you, I was great as a come. I expected like, what I, school, I should have. Construction, this is a new way. And they don't take.
And oh, and we still have. Well, our areas, the area will go on, you can see the spot.
We have a lot of strange people coming in. We did have a strange.
That's all playing. When I listen, he won't write just Casey. Maybe he's quiet. See, he's coming from that end, he he comes in the bathroom, he's down there.
Man, he's quiet, so, see, he's coming from that end, he's, he's coming from that end.
I wasn't ready, I was, I was trying to get a couple of, a couple of.
Yeah.
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 All right.
Ryan, you're telling, you're telling him to sit down. We're gonna get through this.
Oh, we got.
I got no questions.
Yes, sir.
Besides fire crack attacks, what else do they have to play for us?
Law doing. Law doing, it's your first law, it's why, it's law doing fireworks, yeah.
So they still do, don't they?
Yeah, they still do law doing fireworks, uh, I'm on the partner of legal, what does?
Oh, of course, now they do law, they do law, they do it too. And sometimes sales tax, because they're Avenue, I guess they have it something like, so, but, yeah, but we're pretty much, yeah. See, I don't understand a lot bigger, because, you know, it's cheaper, you get a discount when you pay through the state. So, you know, for years, I went through, you know, the state, I used the, but, you know, since I was in a store, and I'm like, I never got a discount, you get a discount for the state.
Change.
You pay.
The bill was unchanged.
It was unchanged.
I really had the bill unchanged.
And it's quick.
Okay, anything else?
We're back in business.
Yeah, we're back in business. Mr. Oden, you have anything?
No, of course.
All right, no business, none, all right, discussion eyes.
I do have a question for George.
Yes, ma'am.
George, on these, uh, R and B bed breakfasts, if people, you know, are turning their homes.
Yes, ma'am.
And, now, they're being taxed.
Twenty percent, that's the max I could demonstrate.
Are we catching all of those, or?
Pretty much so, I think what the, the, even the chamber of commerce had, we already have all of those, so, yes, we're, if, if it comes through V R B O, if it comes off of Facebook, if it comes off of Airbnb. Look, that pressure is catching, she's catching them in the field, she knocks on the door, there's, oh, no, I, I just rented this place. Ding, we have winters, so, yeah.
Are y'all providing Genie Elise?
I don't, I don't know if we've had a request, but we can give that list to her, um, I don't have a problem giving her the list of that.
They have to have a county license.
They should have a county, I don't know if the license actually, if they're required by the state to have a license. I don't tell you that, because that's actually his ball of wax, not mine. Like, come on, brother, tell us, if they're required for bed, bed breakfast, I don't know. But I do know that they are subject to business personal property, which is everything inside that, that structure, and outside, that they use for that bed breakfast, whether it be a grill outside, fire pit, chairs, a bed, sheets, plates, cups, knives, forks, whatever. They're responsible for all of that in business personal property. And then they're responsible, um, for the twenty percent taxes that we'll collect on, on that particular property. Ryan gets a little higher percentage on some things, now, you get fifteen percent on cars, don't you? Fifteen percent on cars, so, but ours is ten and twenty on, on property. So I don't know, and I think that we've talked about this before, I don't think either one of us is sure on whether or not they're supposed to have a business license. That would help if they were required to have a business license, but I'm not sure that they are required. You got to understand this, that this was not a thing twenty years ago. So unless legislation has passed to include them.
They may be flying under the radar.
They may be flying under the radar, and on top of that, that's the same way it is with, with us on our end, is that this, these are new things for us, and we're catching them any way we can. But it would be great if it was through that part of legislation, where they said, hey, this is going to fall under. It's kind of like tiny homes for us. The state and the manual, and the appraisal manual, doesn't have anything for a tiny home. They don't have it. We created that.
There's actually someone out there that's being rented.
Sure they are, I mean, most definitely.
Not like what we're talking about, they're getting rented about a month.
Yes, they are getting long-term rentals on it, yes, and, and if we can catch where the owner's not living in the property, we're going to tax it twenty percent.
So if you, so if you got a piece of property, so let's say you've got an old tiny house, and you've got fifty acres of land with it, and you're renting a room out, like the bed breakfast, two or three rooms, so at that minute, the whole property goes at twenty percent.
No, unfortunately not, if they have current use on the land that's five acres or more, that's like just the acre, that's cut out for the house, and that house.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, current use properties are exempt from business use like that, like, let me give you this, I'll give you this as an example, because I was always like, I don't understand this. If, if a timber company owns five hundred acres of land, and they lease that land, they're making money off that land. They're leasing it to hunters, they're leasing it, still does not matter. It's still taxed, it's current use. So I can't change the use of a current use property. But we can change that acre where it's, and we're going to bust them on that. If you've got a, if you've got a tower on your, your property, that acre with that tower is going to be taxed at twenty percent. If you have a sign on the interstate that's on your property, you're going to be, you're going to be taxed at twenty percent, yeah.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, we need a way to see if they're paying lock and tax.
Okay, so, see, that's out of my realm, I can tell you, hey, we've got them picked up as an Airbnb, but I don't know what the enforcement side of that is.
We can get a list, it would make it a whole lot easier.
Okay, that's easy enough, Randy can give you the list of everybody that we have on, as Airbnb kind of properties. Um, it's not going to help you with rental properties, because remember this, rental properties are usually vacant properties, where they can bring in their furniture and put it inside a rental property, and they're using their furniture, so all we're taxing them at is twenty percent, we're not getting any business personal property on the inside, okay? So I'm just kind of giving you a heads up on that, that is completely different than Airbnb, where I've got a completely furnished unit, and I'm asking you to, to give me four hundred dollars a night, and I'm spending four hundred dollars a night back, we're going to tax you on everything that's in there. Yeah.
Just like, yeah, meaning on the shelves.
Yes, just like the shelves, yeah, if it's not for sale, it's taxable for business personal property. And now, y'all are aware that there's a forty thousand dollar exemption. The first forty thousand on the state portion of business personal property will be enforced this October. There'll be no business personal property on the first forty thousand for the state's portion. The county could have opted in or opted out of that, and I don't think that y'all opted in or out, so that made you out. So we're still collecting that first forty thousand for the county's, uh, portion and the city's portion, but the state does not get the first forty thousand on that.
Well, on this, like this Airbnb deal, would that work on that also?
Yes, on the business personal property on the inside, the first forty thousand for state purposes will not be taxed. Uh, for county, all of it will be taxed, but first forty thousand for the state will not.
And that just goes into effect, just coming here.
This coming October first, when I start collecting, and October first, twenty twenty-four, will include that forty thousand dollar, um, cut, right there. That's really going to be affecting y'all mostly at the, I mean, it's not going to be affecting y'all at all, but it will affect the state on the big, the big business personal properties, like, you know, the south wires and the businesses like that, yeah.
Those apartments over there, that we had the deal on, like a year ago, they're not paying nothing hardly now.
They're paying hardly anything, we had one property that was almost a million dollars in value, and the state brought those values down to like a hundred forty thousand on that one, and it's not comparable to any other. Uh, so the state really does what they want to do sometimes, and they make the deals from the back door, and we have to follow those. And that's another reason why I say, I'm not against that cap, because it seems like everybody gets their cut, and I, I, all I hear is that the, the state is flush with money, I don't know what that means, but, uh, I mean, if they're flush with money, they're trying to cut taxes everywhere, great. I'm, I'm all for it, so, but y'all know how this goes, we cut, something's got to come back in and replace it, so where is it going to be? So, unfortunately, any other question, I'm sorry, I took up way too much y'all's time.
I might go for another one.
Well, me too.
So any questions? Discussion eyes, I think it's all right, Bob.
Discussion eyes, yes, uh, let me see if I got a page here. Talking about the hot water heaters at the jail, uh, I got with, uh, Lane this afternoon, and E pod and D pod? D, or what is it, what's the two pods? Where the boiler at?
Yes, back there behind them, it'll do C, E, and A, and one for the kitchen.
Okay, so what we did?
Without getting into all the technical details, can we just adjust the budget twenty thousand dollars, are you taking it?
I'm different to that point.
He's just going to, he's going to put all the explanation out.
We're buying, we're buying, we're buying hot water heaters, but on, on a rush of what's going on, because I only found this out Saturday, and I think Lane only found it out after I called him. But, uh, what it is over E pod, which is still, I'm just saying E pod, okay? And see, we don't have, we're going to take the, the part of the roof off to get the other boiler in and out over at the kitchen and on the, the front half of the jail. So, we're doing away with the boiler, but we're adding two hot water heaters. One to run the kitchen, one to run the pod, because it's been, the water's been so hot, so this is the time to fix it off. Well, I don't think it's going to cost right at twenty million, we'll spend what we got to spend. So we're saving money about in hot water heaters, but when I talked with Lane today, and again, how much does it cost to replace those, those mixing valves? About four, five thousand each time?
Yeah.
Every two, three years, long story short, uh, over an E pod, I'm going to have to get in Kelly to give me a price on that, so we might wind up being twenty-three thousand. So, I'm not going to spend no more money than we have to, because I've got involved in this, so if y'all just give me about twenty-four to get it, and that way we'll be out of the boiler business. I don't want to stay in the boiler business.
Do we need to add that to this tonight, or just adjust the, adjust the budget when it comes out?
Yeah, well, Ken is okay for carrying the, the labor, uh, but the hot water heaters, we're paying for the hot water heaters, so let it just come bill to us directly, so then we can adjust it next month.
You just adjust the budget.
That's a good way, but I don't want to be doing nothing that y'all don't know, because I know how y'all are.
You go for it.
Long as you feel it's a dollar per year, I, I trust you.
Okay, well, I'm not going to spend no more after, that's where I've been back and forth, see if I can get a smaller hot water heater, and, and Lane too, to get what we need, we want to make sure we're efficient, but we want to make sure that we're not spending too much.
You not get the thing cut up instead of taking the roof off?
Not on this side, come on, man. It's only two pieces of metal, Robbie's going to loan us the bone truck, but the thing of it is, we have to cut the hammer rails off, the door out, we're all going to just take two pieces of metal off the edge of the roof, so we're going to be right at the edge. I just, and it's right near the phone room too, so communication phone, I want to make sure Thursday that it's off and back on, whether we get to stay there until Friday morning, it's got to be back on, and back to play, because it's supposed to rain Friday.
I make a motion that we put in and adjourn this, and make a motion.
It's already, it's already done, man, any motion is done to be carried on.
All right, anything else? I want to take a motion with adjourn.
Second.
All the players say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any, anybody aye, go ahead and adjourn.